All right, welcome everyone to the Pequot Lakes mayoral and city council candidate forum. My name is Matt Killian. I am the president of the Brainerd Lakes Chamber of Commerce, and it's my honor to be your moderator this evening. But more than that, I'm also very proud to partner with our partner organizations that are putting on all of these candidate forums throughout the Brainerd Lakes area. And I'm talking about our five area chambers of commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the Brainerd Dispatch, all partnering together to bring you this event this evening. Special thanks to the Pequot Lakes Chamber Advisory Board and our director Katie Wasserman for helping plan this event. And I'd especially like, of course, to thank the candidates, those of you in attendance, and those watching on Facebook, as well as Breezy Point Resort for donating the facility to us tonight. We're in this COVID time period, so it's really hard to find space to host events. So if you don't mind, could you help me give everyone a round of applause for pulling tonight together? Thank you very much.[96.39][96.39][applause] So as you all know, we all have a right to vote and a responsibility to make an informed choice. And these forums are a wonderful opportunity to get to know our local candidates by hearing from them directly. So tonight's event, as I mentioned, will be livestreamed on the Pequot Lakes Chamber Facebook page, and it will be available for viewing until Election Day. Our live broadcast is made possible by a grant from the Brainerd Lakes Area Community Foundation, so we thank Carl and his team over there for helping us out and bringing this candidate forum to a broader audience. So tonight, of course, we're going to be covering the Pequot Lakes City Council and Mayor's races. You may know this already, but just to refresh your memory, if you don't, that the council has four-year terms and two seats are up for reelection this year. And the mayor has a two-year term, and of course, only one mayor will be elected. So before I begin, I'd like just to cover a few points on the format that we're going to be used. And first of all, I have to say that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the forum organizers. Our organizers don't endorse candidates or political parties. We also ask that our attendees be as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking, so that everyone is able to hear. And please hold your applause until the forum has ended, so that the candidates have all the time possible to make their points. No photography or video will be allowed during the forum. So you are welcome to submit written questions. And for our Facebook friends, you're allowed to submit questions as well. We'll be walking around those with blank pieces of paper and pens. So if you think of a question, I'll have Katie or Sue just walk around and just raise your hand. We'll get you a piece of paper and a pen. And you can go ahead and ask that. For those of you on Facebook, obviously you're just typing it in as a comment. We reserve the right to reword or consolidate questions in order to cover as many topics as possible. So if you don't get a chance to ask your question, or if the answer is unclear, you can always find these candidates after the forum and connect with them. So our format is that each candidate will have three minutes for opening remarks. I will then ask a series of prepared questions, and they'll get a minute and a half to respond to each of those. And then we'll take audience questions, also a minute and a half. They'll wrap up with one-minute closing statements, excuse me. And to ensure fairness, we'll rotate the order of responses, so not the same person has to answer first every single time. Our volunteer timers today are Andre Erikson and Dr. Ryan Buell. Our question screeners at the back of the room are Bruce Mead and Pete Moes. And Pete's one of our partners on the committee, and he's the publisher of the Brainerd Dispatch. So thanks for, Bruce, and Pete for being here as well. So with that, we'll move into our opening statements, beginning with Mr. Tyler Gardner to my left.
Good morning.[296.62][296.62][laughter] Well, don't laugh at me about that. My grandma always said good morning, didn't matter the time of day, and it's kind of stuck. I'm from Pequot, born and raised, come and gone a bunch of times in search of the greener grass, and I found it, and it was back here at home. I've got my wife, Kim. We have four kids together, two still in school, and one of them is in school in Pequot. I know, it's a lot to keep up with. I was on the city council in 2014 and 15, or 13 and 14, and I loved it. Unfortunately, I had to move out of town, so I had to resign from that seat. And now we moved back to Pequot about a year ago, bought our family's garbage company, and decided it was time to get back involved in the city. And we just decided to jump into the mayoral race. That's all I've got for you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Good evening. Thanks for coming to the candidate forum tonight. My name is James Taylor. I've lived and worked in Pequot for 16 years, raised my family here. My wife, my daughter Jordan, she attends Carlson School of Business in the cities. I'm percivable and I get along with people. I do not expect to have it my way all the time. I have demonstrated support for the local schools, local businesses, and our residents. We want our local businesses to continue to provide the products and services that local residents, as well as visitors are looking for. We want our local businesses to thrive. We need to keep our city parks, streets, and sidewalks clean and safe to make our city more welcoming. The city must show support for local businesses by sharing with the visitors and residents what our businesses have to offer. We support the Chamber of Commerce and encourage participation. I'll make it a priority to find out what local business owners are expecting from city services and what are satisfied with, and what they expect more of. Listening to local businesses is critical. Often, the small local businesses are more successful if they work closely with the mayor and the city council. They learn about the community changes much quicker and have more opportunity to provide input to the city leaders. The mayor and city council will endure that all businesses owners and are considered equal, yeah, I need my glasses, I guess, during projects and events, whether they are women, men, or minorities. I will encourage participation in city activities by businesses and residents, as this strengthens governance and the local level. I'll support improving housing availability, so that we, our businesses, can hire employees that are able to move and live in our community. We need to work with the school bird on the Heart of the Good Life project, the sports complex project, as this will bring much-needed activities to the area and will help our local businesses thrive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Jason Baca is next.
Hello. I've grown up here my whole life. I started a business when I was 16. I still operate it today. I've operated it, started without any money, and have never borrowed any money, and I'm still running a successful business. I have three main reasons why you should vote for me. My platform is simple: less taxes, less regulations, and more freedom. What's not to love about that? My primary focus is working to improve the retail and commercial sectors in the downtown, and attracting new business to the industrial park through low taxes, low regulations, and helping make the retail area more competitive with downtown Nisswa. I would like to keep our residential taxes low and encourage more growth. Most of our growth occurred between 2000 and 2010. In the last 10 years, the population growth was 6.3%, but our taxes have probably quadrupled. So we do have explosive growth, but it is in our tax rate. My neighbor a few doors down who lives in another district pays $100 a month less, and I think that is making us less competitively. Our taxes are growing faster than our population, and I hope to change that. Do you prefer to pay $100 more per month for the same services, the same school district, and have less rights compared to your neighboring town? My main focus is lowering the budget, eliminating petty ordinances and regulations that waste staff time and cost taxpayers more money to enforce. I believe we have 186 pages of ordinances. I have another house in Jenkins Township, and they have no ordinances, and I have yet to seen any disorder, reckless behavior, junkyards, or feedlots created without those ordinances. On police, I'm going to encourage the outstanding police to concentrate on preventing violent crimes, theft, and petty drug dealers, and putting drug dealers in jail, excuse me, and keeping drugs out of the school, and spending less time on petty citations that increase our budget. I do not think it is worth enforcing lots of window tinting, taillight covers, and other things that just lead to an explosive police budget, but don't actually really increase safety, in my opinion. We are entering a time of great uncertainty with COVID and government mandates that restrict our rights as personal citizens, our property rights, and for our businesses to even operate. Again, my primary focus is less taxes and more freedom. I would like to preserve and promote the rural character and the many natural attractions, which is making us a great spot, one of the top spots in the state for tourism. And it's a great place for families to move to. And I think through some changes in our tax code, I think we can increase the population growth, which is currently stalling. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baca. Next up, we have Mr. Pete Clement.
Hi, my name's Pete. I'm a 22-year resident of Pequot Lakes. I've got two kids that graduated from school here. We have a home and a business in the city limits, so I am concerned about taxes. I was five years an employee with the city as a maintenance worker, so I feel like I've got a pretty good insight as to how this local government, our city government functions on, you know, on a personnel, on a infrastructure, on a policy level. There isn't much of the city I didn't see in the five years I worked for. I guess I'm running because I know we need growth, but I want calculated growth, you know, growth for the sake of growth kind of scares me. I guess the bottom line is, I really like Pequot. I like the small-town feel. I like the quality of life, and I think we need to maintain that. And kind of like Jason said, not at the expense of taxes going up. In order to grow this town, we need to mitigate some of that, I believe.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Kent Johnson.
Thank you for inviting me to this forum for the candidates. I'm running because I want to be known as a voice for the city, not what I want. That includes making fiscally responsible decisions for the betterment of our city. To grow, compete, and attract businesses, we as a city will have to look at what draws people and businesses to our area. This means that there are areas we need to spend and invest money in, and there are other areas where the price doesn't pay off for the city, and they need to be either reassessed or even scrapped. I want to make sure that we are always looking for the right problem, right solution. So many times we find the right problem, and then we don't find the dialogue together and find the right solution. Or worse, we don't look at the right problem, and we try to solve a non-identified problem. Being able to come to the table without an agenda other than what is best for the community is why I think that I'll make the best candidate for the city council. I currently am two and a half years into the City Parks Commission, and I have coached multiple sports for the youth, and I have volunteered countless hours with the basketball and baseball programs for the area. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Mr. Scott Peterson is next.
Hello. I'd like to first thank the Pequot Chamber Commerce for organizing this forum, and also thank Breezy Point Resort for hosting it, providing space for it at their beautiful resort. As a candidate for city council, I believe it's all about experience. I've been a positive voice for businesses and residents of Pequot on the council for eight years, and I serve as a liaison to the Economic Development Commission. I had a 30-year business career, or a career in business management in advertising and publishing. Last 16 years I spent with the Infisherman Group down in Baxter, and that where I managed and directed multi-staff departments, multi-million-dollar budgets. And I also started my own small business. And I'm basically a common-sense thinker, an idea person, an out-of-the-box problem solver, who welcomes a good challenge slash opportunity. Economics have been and will continue to be my top priority if reelected as a councilman. Our property tax rate is 7% with, or 7% to 15% higher than our surrounding communities. And I've worked hard to lower it over the years, and if reelected, will continue on that course. It's one reason that I voted to not approve last year's budget, which was 6.5% increase. I've consistently opposed unnecessary spending and increasing the property tax rate, even when our current council members have not. I also believe we need to continue to support and build security to our current businesses and our community. I provided the necessary leadership by insisting that Main Street stayed open during the downtown road construction this past spring, as requested by downtown businesses. I'm also a committed leader who wrote the city policy to get our businesses back open during this COVID shutdown. More businesses, retail, manufacturing, and services, and more housing units are needed in our city to help ensure the financial stability of our town. Streets and parks and neighborhoods need to be maintained and improved to encourage that growth. And finally, there's something called safety. We want to feel safe in our community, safe in our businesses, safe in our homes. And when we drive and walk and bike around town, there seems to be this war going on across this country on police. But I have to say, as this councilman, not in Pequot Lakes. I'm a very strong supporter of our police department, as well as our fire department and first responders. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And last but not least, we have Ms. Mimi Swanson there at the end. And Mimi, you have three minutes.
I would also thank the chamber, Katie Wasserman and Breezy, for having us all here tonight. I am Mimi Swanson. I am a resident of Pequot Lakes and have been since 2001. Living in Pequot Lakes for close to 20 years has been a wonderful experience for me. Being close to nature, meeting exceptional people, feeling a closeness to my city, has given me a sense of peace and love for my community. I am a current member of our town city council, having been elected for a first term in 2017. I am grateful that the citizens of Pequot Lakes elected me to this position, showing me their trust and confidence in my ability to perform the duties of a councilman. You may ask, what's in it for me if I vote for Mimi Swanson? Because I am motivated, balanced, and honest. Having four years of service to the city of Pequot Lakes has given me a solid start on understanding the workings of government. I have learned to be confident in myself, to help make good decisions about the future of our town. During my first four years in office, I have served as liaison to several commissions, including parks, city planning, economic development, and safety. I have served on planning commissions, where we tackled the redesign of Rasmussen Road, and also currently participating on a team made up of citizens, business owners, and school officials, wherein we are gathering thoughts and ideas as to how to best implement a safe and effective design for our main roadway through town, that is Patriot Avenue. I also supported and encouraged the Save the Ranger Tower initiative, which has now been completed. What a beautiful attraction that citizens and tourists alike can enjoy. I strongly support our local fire department and police department. We must continue funding these departments, so that they can perform their jobs at the highest level, using current, reliable, and safe equipment and trucks. I promise to strive for fiscal responsibility and be innovative in our budget planning, so as not to increase our citizens' tax burden. If I am elected for a second term, I will continue to study the issues and put the citizens of Pequot Lakes first. I will strive to keep our town financially stable and protect the town we call home. I can honestly say that it has been an honor to serve you, and I would like to continue to do the job you elected me to do. Thank you for your support and your trust, and I will appreciate your vote on November 3rd.
All right. Thank you, Mimi, and thank you to all the candidates. Now, we're going to transition into the prepared questions that our planning committee put together, and I have four of those. So each person will get a chance to respond, one minute and a half each. And we're going to rotate the order, so this one is going to go first to Mr. James Taylor. So the first question is, what do you see as the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge for the city of Pequot Lakes, and how would you address them? So I'll read that one more time. What do you see as the greatest opportunity and the greatest challenge for the city of Pequot Lakes, and how would you address them? James, one and a half minutes.
All right. I think our greatest opportunity is the Heart of the Good Life project that we have. I'm a believer in the sports complex. It'd be great to work with the local school board to be involved with that as well. That's our biggest opportunity. The hardest part is getting it done, getting people to get behind it and stick with it.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to move to your left here, to Mr. Jason Baca. Jason, the greatest opportunity, greatest challenge, how would you address them?
Yeah, I think also the greatest opportunity to me is in the downtown, the retail area next to the park. We have a beautiful facility there, beautiful park, beautiful grounds. I think of fairly well, nicely-designed streets in there. I think we're going to make some park improvements. But ultimately, the challenge is, you know, the community decided to bypass our town, and that's reducing our traffic by, I don't know, 12,000 cars a day. So dealing with that is going to be, you know, how do we lose 12,000 vehicles a day and then bring some of them back? First off, we have to be competitive, and our taxes are just too dang high. Like, our growth has stopped the last 10 years. So if we can reduce our taxes, that will help. And if we invest in these infrastructure projects in the downtown area around the park, I think we will get newer businesses to come in. And if we, I mean, there's just so much space there to use that I think, you know, just getting the people back into the city and new businesses to invest. But right now, it's just too dang expensive, and it's not financially or economically worth it for businesses to invest there if taxes are too high. It's just that simple.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Clement, greatest opportunity and challenge, how would you address both?
I think the greatest opportunity in this, in our town is, you know, like, Heart of the Good Life, some of the other economic situations that are available. I think there's all kinds of potential for wonderful growth in our town. I think the biggest challenge will be to facilitate that and encourage it in kind of a calculated way. So always with the mind to taxes. I guess, you know, any idea or plan, as far as I'm concerned, you know, better not just be blue sky in the end. I mean, we need to do our homework and have some hard numbers to justify things.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kent Johnson, same question to you, opportunity, challenge, how would you address both?
I think our greatest opportunity, like has been stated, is the Heart of the Good Life, but also our youth. And I think we need to develop that area in a way that it encourages our youth to stay. And we also need to develop that area so that that alone, people see off 371, and they want to come in. There's no other way to go about it. We need to get people to come off of the highway and come back into our town.
All right. Thank you. Scott, we'll turn to you for a minute and a half.
All right. Thanks. Opportunity, Pequot's loaded with them. I think the one thing that we have that's necessary for growth is room to grow. And we do have that. We have space for additional retail. We have space for manufacturing facilities. We have space in our town to housing developments. So the space is there, and we just need to expand on those. And some of the things that get people interested in moving to a community are good roads, good city streets, good schools. We have a great school, and amenities like parks. And expanding our park is adding amenities to it is something that needs to be looked at or continue to be looked at. The challenge is always going to be money. Where does it come from? We've been given, it sits in our ready-to-be-used, 120,000, or 100, somewhere in 120,000 range, for an improvement into the park. That's a step that is laying there, ready to be taken on and built on. We've got the expansion of our business park south of the current business park. Part of that could easily be given to the school and turned into 20 acres of ball fields to help our school system. So we have lots of space, lots of opportunity. And the challenge is always be money.[1581.03][1581.03][phone ringing]
That's a, that's a great way to call it time, so thank you.
Perfect. No, that was good. That was good. Beats a gong.
Mimi, way down at the end, opportunities and challenges. You have one minute and 30 seconds.
I think we have a great opportunity in this town to buy local. When folks buy local, two to three times as much money stays in the local economy. When we buy local, our community benefits as a whole. Instead of spending your dollars at a big box store, shift your focus to our local lumberyard, grocery store, hardware store, clothing stores, fitness and physical therapy, chiropractic care, the list goes on. Pequot Lakes has everything that we need right here. Buying local is a win-win for everyone. Revenue generated by local businesses keeps our tax burden lower. So let's save our local economy in Pequot Lakes by starting a trend. Buy local and make our community smile.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Swanson. We're going to make the turn all the way down to this end of the table with Mr. Tyler Gardner on opportunities and challenges. Tyler?
Thank you. Yes. I think we have a lot of opportunity here, and it's hard to nail down just one to pick from. So I'm going to say two, the Heart of the Good Life project and the Patriot Avenue project. I think there's been a committee I've been a part of to redesign Patriot Avenue, and there's a lot of ideas thrown out there. So I think a big opportunity there to make it the best it can be, to help with flow currently and in the future, like we talked about, the Heart of the Good Life project. If that all goes according to plan, it'd be nice to see all this extra traffic and extra influx of money coming to spend local. Some challenges are going to be on the Heart of the Good Life. How do we finance it? Who's going to finance it? Is it going to be a school, a city, whose taxes are paying for it, basically, and how much it's going to be? The other challenge would be coming together on the road plan with all the different plans I've seen and ideas I've heard, trying to come up with the best plan that the majority of people in Pequot are going to be happy with and thrive from. I want to thrive, not just survive here in Pequot.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, I think we've gotten all of the answers to the first question, so I have three more before we turn it over to you and the audience and our Facebook audience as well. So this is our second question here. It's directed at first to Mr. Jason Baca, and the question is, what is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees? What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees? And once again, you have 90 seconds.
Well, I think we have way too many regulations and ordinances that are prohibiting growth. I think that not raising the taxes is probably the best thing we can do. There are some services, I think, that we could probably cut budgets on, and nobody would see an impact. And I'm totally willing to take any And I'm totally willing to take any, make really hard decisions, but, I mean, ultimately, we're in the time of Corona and government mandated shutdowns, and if we don't control our budget, we could be in a pile of trouble. And that's ultimately my goal, is to make sure we're properly positioned to be in a fiscally better spot so when all this passes, that businesses will want to come here again, and they can justify it because we can have a superior, I mean, if we have a 15% higher tax rate, we have to have a superior product. Because if I'm in business, I can charge more if I have a better product. I'm trying not to be a pessimist, but we haven't built a better product to justify that 15%. So first off, I would like to knock off the 15%, and then we can work on the superior product. I would hate to borrow a ton of money and have a 15% higher tax rate. It just seems like a big gamble that I'm not willing to take.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to repeat that question for Pete Clement. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees?
Well, I guess I'm kind of a minimalist in that respect. I, we live on a private road. We don't have any services down there. I push the snow, I, you know, we do the grading. As an employee of the city, I do think there's quite a few places that could be cut. You know, obviously, the basics need to happen, but yeah, I think there's room, there's room to, to knock some money out of those budgets. Yeah, and I'd be willing to do it.
All right, thank you. And Kent, same question to you, balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees. You have a minute and a half.
We need to use what we have already wisely and not stretch ourselves or the citizens beyond our means. If we need to buy new equipment, we have to look at, does the cost of the new equipment outweigh servicing that equipment over and over again? Or is the new way the best way to go?
All right, thank you. Scott, word to you, and I'll read that one one more time, your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees?
You know, it's something I've been actually working on for eight years. The more efficiency in our city services is something that can be improved on greatly. We don't need some of the new equipment. We don't need to always do it in-house. I've not been that successful convincing other council members that hiring, for instance, the potential of hiring, snow plowing down on the roads way out of the area, out of the downtown area, replacing or moving snow with hired people, using possibility of even grass mowing from just, just hired people, or part-time. But part-time college kids to work. I work at a golf course, work at Deacons in the, in the summer, and without part-time work, they wouldn't exist. And I keep getting shot down on that by our council, that it's not a good idea, or it's impossible, or whatever. So that's an efficiency issue that really needs to be looked at, and I, I'm going to keep fighting for it. And in that regard, it's also managing your taxes at the same time. The lower you spend to get the same work done in a better way is called doing it efficiently and more effectively, and that will keep your taxes at a lower rate.
All right, thank you, Scott. Mimi, word to you, and again, we're talking about the quality of city services, excuse me, versus taxes and fees, and your philosophy on balancing those two, and you have one minute and a half.
Well, I think we all know that death and taxes is a certainty, and it's a, it's a really tough issue. All of our departments in the city, I believe, have been very diligent in putting their budgets together. I don't see anybody with excess spending to the point of just ruining our whole budget. We're right, we're now in the process of finalizing the budget, and we're planning on going line by line to see if we can cut out certain things that we feel are excessive. So I know it costs money to run a city, and we'll try as hard as we can to keep the budget in line.
All right, thank you, Mimi. We're going to go back to the front of the table here, at least to my front, my left, and that's Tyler Gardner, and you'll have 90 seconds for the same question.
Okay, so like I've heard several times here is the budget. I think if I'm elected, I'll have to spend the next year diving into the budget, looking at it piece by piece, line by line, and seeing if I can come up with any idea how we can save some money. I mean, if we're trying to weigh the, keep the quality services but manage our taxes and fees, lower them, let alone keep them the same. You've got to figure out ways to save. Maybe there's some, some fluff in there that we don't need. Maybe there are some outsourcing we could do. I don't know the answer, but I know I need to dig into it, figure out the best way to do it, and do some homework, get other people involved, and see if we can't make the budget a little better to keep the quality services. You know, our police, very important to me. Fire is very important. The roads and streets, I mean, we all drive. We've all driven on some roads around town that could really use some repair, but that's more money going out. So yeah, if we don't have it, how can we spend it?
All right, thank you. And James, you get the last word on this question, and I'll ask it one more time. What is your philosophy on balancing the quality of city services with managing taxes and fees?
Well, we do know we have to lower our taxes. This year, right now, we're sitting at a 2.6% levy increase, I believe, which I'm sure we're going to get that down. I know people are talking to get it down to zero. I don't, I don't know if that's going to happen. Our police and fire, I know we have a fire truck that's almost 30 years old. It needs replaced. How do we figure out how to get that replaced? I mean, those are vital services for our community, both police and fire. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so we're to our third prepared question here, and I'm going to ask either Sue or Katie. If anyone wants a piece of paper to ask an audience question, we have two more, and then we're going to transition over to that. The same with our Facebook friends as well, just write those into the comments. And pretty quick here, it's going to be your show, and you're going to be the moderator asking the questions, so I want to give you a heads up. So if you do want a piece of paper, or you have a question, just raise your hand, and we'll get paper and pen over to you. So now we're to our third question, and this is going to be as we rotate responses to Mr. Pete Clement. So the question is, what role, if any, should the city play in helping local businesses and individuals recover financially from the COVID crisis? So I'll read that one more time. What role, if any, should the city play in helping local businesses and individuals recover financially from the COVID crisis? And Pete, you will have a minute and a half.
That's a tough one. I know personally, from a retail standpoint, it, with the, we've actually had quite a few people in town, and I think there's a lot of variables that impact that. They can't go to Canada, nobody wants to fly. So anyway, it, it hasn't been bad. Now, with regard to dealing with folks that are in a tough situation, boy, I, I would be reluctant to bite that off. I guess I just, you know, at what point, at what point does government step out of the picture? I don't know. I just, I, I would have a hard time being any part of anything like that.
All right, thank you. So we'll move to your left here to Kent Johnson. I'm going to ask this question one more time, and then I'll start summarizing it. But what role, if any, should the city play in helping local businesses and individuals recover financially from the COVID crisis? So Kent, you have a minute and a half as well.
Well, from a personal side, we, I lost a business to the COVID crisis. We were 10 months into a new business, and it's just one of those things that I don't, it's harder, it's hard for businesses to have prepared for something like this, and it's even harder for government to prepare for it. And I don't, it's one of those things that no one, there's no right answer, and it's just, like Pete said, sometimes the government just has to, you can't step into everything. I mean, we, we tried several different channels to try and get help, but it's just, it's one of those things that happens, and you've got to try, try to, you, I don't know how you move help through it without damaging the entire city.
All right, so Scott, word to you, and again, how, if at all, should the city play, should, role city, city should play in helping local businesses and individuals recover financially from COVID?
Well, a short answer would be as much as we can. We explored lots of possibilities and found out there's not a whole lot available to us. The city can't just write out a check and help businesses as much as we'd like to. We're, we just can't do that. It's not legal to do that. When this thing first started happening, I ended up talking to 17 local businesses, different varieties, manufacturing, retail, and service, and asked them that question. I said, what can the city do to help? Didn't get a whole lot of solid answers. I think the phone call was more of an encouraging phone call, that the city does care, the council does care about what's going on. What came out of that was we reduced liquor license fees. It helped some. But more than anything else, one of the things that I proposed back in March at the very first budget discussion was to look at 2021 budget as a recovery budget, and do a spending freeze on anything new for the rest of this year. What that would do is free up or ensure us that our property taxes would not increase. In fact, we could make a dramatic drop in them, which would help everyone that owns property in town. And the rental end of things, people that rent, it would be assumed, or at least talk to the owners of those businesses that rent, would also save money.
All right, thank you, Scott. And Mimi, to you, same question, how, if at all, should the city help its citizens and businesses with COVID?
Yeah, none of us will ever forget driving down Main Street and Patriot in February, March. Everything's closed. What a shock. Like Scott said, we did take back some tax money from the dining for liquor licenses, so that, we were hoping that would help somewhat. We also have access to what's called the CARES Fund, and we allocated $40,000 of that chunk of change, you might call it, to our local businesses, and they need to apply for that, apply for those funds to help them through anything that's been caused by the, by the COVID that can help them, cleaning supplies, air conditioning. I'm not sure about every single thing, but I know it's all, it's all related to the COVID. So I hope our businesses take advantage of that.
All right, thank you, Mimi. And then we're over to Mr. Tyler Gardner. I'm going to read that question one more time. What role, if any, should the city play in helping local businesses and individuals recover financially from the COVID crisis? So you have a minute and a half.
I think very little really can be done from the city's standpoint. The city's just like any other business. We bring in so much, and we have so much going out, that's why we have a budget. And we can cut things such as, like they say, liquor licenses, maybe some permit fees, but even that, there's, there's overhead involved, so how much can you really cut? The CARES Act money was mentioned. I know a part of it went to, I think it was Bladech for their helping the local businesses. What's the rest of it being spent on? I think maybe we need to look at being careful on what that's going to, not being frivolous with it, because that may, may be needed here in the short future.
All right, thank you. And now we are to Mr. James Taylor. What are your thoughts about helping local businesses and individuals through COVID? You have 90 seconds.
Well, they all kind of stole my thunder, I think. Yeah, the liquor license fees. We also did reduce the rent for the chamber, local chamber in town, the $40,000 from the CARES Act funding for grants that they do have to apply for. And I believe it's up to $10,000 each, I think, is what those were. Yeah, pretty much what they all said. Did a pretty good job.
Okay. Thank you. And then this, thank you. And then this is, I think, the last answer to the question to Jason Baca. What are your thoughts about helping local businesses and individuals recover from COVID?
Well, I think the easiest thing we could do is all work together to get our governor out of office. Recalling walls would be a boon for our whole state. You know, when our governor infringes on the rights of citizens and businesses to freely operate and put food in their mouths, it's really hard. But despite the authoritarian nature of our governor, I still think there's things we could do as local polit, local politicians. I think, I think we should bend over backwards for our small retail businesses that are by the park area. I think we need to, if we have to cut other budgets to keep those people in business, it's vital. If half of those Main Street businesses go out, people aren't going to come here as much. Like, it is vital that we figure out ways, talk to them and say, what can we do to keep our tax, your taxes low? What do you need to stay in business? Because obviously, we can't get rid of walls on our own. But what we could do is have some more events, yearly events, fundraisers, anything possible, because it is absolutely vital that, you know, you know, you don't want to go to a town when a third of the businesses, go to Sevica, you know? There's six businesses shut. Like, you need those businesses occupied. I mean, I don't care if I have to give free taxes away in a vacant building. Losing people to a government mandated shutdown is the worst thing we should do, and I will not allow it.
All right, well, thank you. And I think that wraps up our third question. We're going to question number four here. This is going to be directed, I believe, to Mr. Kent Johnson, and the question is this. Suppose the city council is tackling a controversial issue. If elected, how would you decide which way to vote? So suppose the city council is tackling a controversial issue, Kent? If elected, how would you decide which way to vote? You have 90 seconds.
You have to listen to the citizens. There's no way on controversial issues where you can make that, you can weigh that on yourself. You have to value what your fellow citizens are going to, are wanting. If it's an issue where people aren't wanting it, why push through on that?
All right, thanks, Kent. We're going to move to your left here, and again, I'll repeat the question for Scott. If the, suppose the city council is tackling a controversial issue. If elected, how would you decide which way to vote? You have a minute and a half.
Yeah, if you're sitting on the council, you're going to run into controversial issues from time to time. Some of them are easy to deal with. A majority will show up and discuss it, or you'll, I find that I'm an information gather. I gather a lot of information before I make a decision on little and small things, and then communicate. And once you gather that information, you find out that if the majority of the crowd says, we want to go this way, and it's something that I can agree with, I would definitely go that way. The difficulty comes in when you've got about a 50-50 split, and half the people want to solve it in one way, and the other half want to go the other way, whatever it is. And we've experienced that here in Pequot Lakes. It comes down to making the decision, making a decision, a tough decision, and, and that's part of the, it comes with the job. If you're elected as a councilperson, sometimes you have to make the tough decision. You're not going to please everybody. At that point, you just weigh everything that's out in front of you and gather as much information as you can. And it sounds kind of trivial, but you go with your gut. And, and if your gut wins, most of the time, that's worked for me in my lifetime, and based on my experience. And, uh, and if your gut wins, uh, most of the time that's worked, uh, for me in my lifetime and based on my experience.
All right, thanks, Scott. Mimi, same question. If, uh, the council was tackling a controversial issue, uh, how would you decide which way to vote if reelected?
Well, I think we need to be responsible and reasonable when we make decisions for today, but also for the future and the future of our children. And sometimes it's hard to take a different path than the rest of the people on the council. But you have to follow your heart and your beliefs and make that tough call. And feel good about following your heart and your, how you believe your citizens will support you.
All right, thank you. So Tyler, word to you. How would you decide how to vote on a controversial issue?
Networking is a big thing for me. I believe in talking to a lot of people, getting a lot of input in a lot of different areas. Uh, that'd be number one for me. And getting people in the door. It's going to be my biggest push. I know a lot of people try it, but trying to get people to actually show up to council meetings, which is, seems to be next to impossible. Uh, to voice their opinion, uh, let their feeling be heard. So it's not just, you know, I know, you know, the council is elected by the people to make decisions. Uh, however, sometimes you need more input, as we've seen in the past with big projects such as the highway bypass. That's been talked about since I was a young kid. Finally happened. Uh, and if it's that big of an issue, maybe it needs to be put to a vote, you know, to the public.
All right, thanks. And James, to you, about controversial issues and how you decide which way to vote?
Need to talk to your residents mostly, they're the ones that elected you. Um, gather all the information you can. Like Tyler said, open forum, come to the city council meetings if it's really controversial, you know? The splash pad, splash pad, very controversial, still is to this day. People are still talking about it. And you have to go with your gut. You can't make everybody happy, you're never going to. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jason, you have a minute and a half as well.
Well, I guess the first question would be, would be very simple. Is it going to raise our taxes? We are currently in a semi uncompetitive environment, so that's going to be my primary question. If it's, if it's regarding taking on more capital debt, um, there would have to be a very well laid out exceptional business plan that I could look at and say, this is worth borrowing money for. Other things, if it's something over private property rights, like I'm always going to be in favor of protecting your property rights. The founding fathers gave us the right to protect our property rights and many people are trying to infringe on those. I do not want to do that. So if it's a policy regarding property rights, I'm always going to side with the homeowner who's paying the taxes and living there or the commercial property. So I would have no issues, um, tackling any hard subject. But ultimately it's, uh, protecting the rights of individual property owners is the vital component. And if somebody else is trying to take away my rights, I'm going to side with the person who owns the property. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I believe Pete, you have the, uh, the last word on this one. If the council were tackling a controversial issue, how would you decide which way to vote?
Well, I guess if it's, uh, controversial, it obviously probably involves money. And, uh, like I stated in my opening, um, I think everything needs to be calculated, thought out. And the end result needs to justify the expenditure. Drive around town, there's a lot of folks in this town that are on fixed incomes. Um, you know, retired elderly, whatnot. And I guess that, that, those are the people that I would be most concerned with. So I'd go to church and I'd ask Vaynaska and Shirley Rabidu what they think.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are now to the audience questions. I do have a couple of them. And again, just encourage you, if you have a question that you'd like to write down and send to the back of the room, you certainly can do that just by raising your hand. We'll get you a piece of paper. If you're on Facebook, it's a lot easier. Uh, so this is the first audience question and it has to do with the Heart of the Good Life Development. And I believe this one's going to Scott first. And the question is this, the Heart of the Good Life Development has been mentioned as an opportunity. What do you see as the ways to promote and fund this? So I'll read that one more time, Scott. The Heart of the Good Life Development has been mentioned as an opportunity. What do you see as ways to promote and fund it? You have ninety seconds.
Okay, the Heart of the Good Life, for those of you that might not know, it's the area just south of, eighty acres south of, uh, the current business park, used to be the spray irrigation field prior to the highway. So there's eighty acres there of city, public land. We just sold four acres, five acres of it to, um, XL, who was building a garage out there. And, uh, for about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, as well as a grant that the city received, is going to provide the infrastructure and the roadway to that. And that, when that gets done, there would be a space on the other side already with infrastructure and road. So that's one way you fund your businesses as they grow. The plan is to, to not build it and they will come, it's, they will come and then we build it. As the streets come and as the businesses come to pay for it and add to our tax base. It's a huge accomplishment to do it that way. One of the, uh, discussion points I'm sure a lot of people have talked about is this recreation facility on the south end. It started with twenty acres. That's a million dollars worth of property. And the city has talked about, uh, giving it to the school in talking format. And in my opinion, the best option is if the, if the school and, and the city can work out the logistics of it, to give the property to the city for their ball fields and then the city's out of it. We're not in the business of building ball fields and, and recreational facilities.
All right, thank you, Scott. And Mimi, I'll just rephrase this and talking again about the Heart of the Good Life Development. What do you see as the ways to promote and fund it? So you'll have a minute and a half response as well.
I know that we've worked with two companies to go together and put a video, which we've, um, distributed amongst the, the community and our surrounding areas, talking about this Heart of the Good Life. And it's a great video. It's such a good advertising tool that we've used. We've also put up some flags along the, along the, um, new highway, advertising the property. I know the Economic Development Commission has worked very hard to promote this property. And we've all already got, I think it's XL Energy has bought a parcel of land already. And we've talked to, uh, community development about ball fields and recreational parcels being used for that purpose. So I think it's, it's going to take some time, but I think it's a, it's a great, great opportunity for our city. We're fortunate to have that property available.
All right, thanks, Mimi. And then we're to Tyler Gardner, talking about the Heart of the Good Life Development, funding and promoting that project. Your thoughts the next minute and a half?
Uh, the video that Mimi mentioned was, it, it's awesome. And I think social media is huge nowadays, as we all know. Uh, promoting on social media is big. Uh, as far as funding it, that's yet to be seen, what, what's going to happen, whether it's a city project, a school project or both. Um, if the city is going to build it, you know, the idea of selling off the property in there and building that up first may have to be looked at. Um, if the school funds it, you know, it's a lot less per, per household, I would say. Comes out that way because the school district's a lot larger, but then I think we're limited on what we can do for a use there. Public forums are, are big also. I mean, I know you don't get a lot of people there, but you can get some turnout. And I know they've been having some public meetings, uh, before I think March, probably they kind of had to slow that down. And getting students involved, finding out what, what the students want, what their use for it would be. And, and maybe some opportunity for them to get involved in the promotion and fundraising of it.
All right, thank you, Tyler. James, your thoughts on the Heart of the Good Life Development?
Video on YouTube, it's great. Um, they did an excellent job in promoting that. The sports complex, I think that was built. You have the lights on at night, cars driving by just like in Sartell. It's lit up, you want to go into that town. You're going to go in there, you're going to spend money. To fund it, work with the school board. I know if we work the school board, the tax will be lower on everybody. And it'll just be, it'll be huge for the community if something like that was here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, James. And then we're to Jason, I'm just going to rephrase this or rework, restate it, excuse me, one more time. Talking about the Heart of the Good Life Development. Uh, what do you see as the best ways to promote and fund that project?
I'm not totally sure if the Heart of the Good Life includes the business part or if it's just the sports complex. But, um, if we want to build the sports complex, um, as you know, I want to keep taxes low. I think this has to be done by charity and fundraising. We have thousands and thousands of rich people. And if people can justify the case for this, I know people will give the money to build it without having to raise our taxes. So I would first, I'd maybe say the city could pitch in some or the school board, but I would say, start your nonprofit and raise the money and it will come if it's supposed to happen. If it's the business side, I mean, it's very obvious we are losing our talented youth to the big city. So on the business part of it, if we don't do something to attract people, I mean, Tesla went to Austin because it's hip and there's low taxes and it left California for that reason. Like, if Pequot wants to do that, our taxes need to be low and we need to have a really nice retail area with places to eat and continue to work on that park sector. And then I think the businesses will come and some of our kids will stay. If, you know, if these businesses come and bring in jobs, right now there's not currently a ton of jobs available for college educated kids, so they leave. It's our best export of Pequot is its youth. So we do need to do something. And I think it starts by low taxes and getting charities and foundations and fundraisers that want to help build the sports complex.
All right, thank you, Jason. I think we have two more here, two more responses to hear. And the first one is from Mr. Pete Clement.
Well, my wife, Lynn, has been on the Economic Development Council and they've, they've talked a lot about that. Um, I think they're doing a great job and I think committees like that are invaluable. You know, they've got a nice mix of folks from all aspects of the community. So I would, I, I would take a lot of direction from them. I guess I'm, I'm very optimistic on XL Energy going in there. I think, uh, I mean, given who they are, hopefully post-COVID. I, I think, uh, once they have a facility in there, I think things are going to take off. Um, with regard to the ball field, I, I'm kind of with Scott. I, uh, I mean, I think it'd be a great asset, a wonderful amenity to the town. But, uh, yeah, I guess I don't know. I would really like to see the school get involved in that. I, I, I would have a hard time passing that tax burden off to just the people, the citizens of Pequot Lakes. I'd like to see the school board, uh, be, be partners on that.
All right, thank you. And Kent, you'll get the last word on this topic, the Heart of the Good Life Development and the ways to promote and fund it. So you get ninety seconds and then we'll move on to audience questions.
Kind of the same thing. The sports complex on the south end, we need to work with the school. They're going to, they know what they need and they'll be able to, they have more means of raising money for it. As far as the, the property itself, the signs along the road say shovel ready, but it's a cornfield. We need to somehow lay out the road, whether it's gravel to start with, to show how it's going to lay out. Get it so it looks shovel ready. Right now it looks harvest ready.
All right, thanks a lot. Kent, and I'm to another audience question. And I have to say that you're, uh, a lot more creative than the planning committee in your questions. So this one will go to, uh, Scott Peterson first. And this is a hypothetical. If the city of Pequot Lakes received. It's, did I, oh, Mimi, I'm sorry. Yep, sorry about that. Good catch, thank you. So Mimi, this one's to you. If, uh, the city of Pequot Lakes received a one million dollar donation with no strings attached, how would you use it? If the city received a million dollar donation with no strings attached, how would you use it? Mimi Swanson, you have ninety seconds.
I think that number one, our fire department is working with very old trucks. Thirty years old. So I think we'd have, I would definitely invest in some equipment for them. I mean, they have to go to fires, risk their lives, they need good equipment. Uh, second option would be, um, working on Patriot Avenue and Main Street on our park. Like for instance, um, just, uh, bringing our town together. I know we're separated by the road. I think we can do a little more to, to put that together and bring us all together. It's a tough question, but it, it would be welcome.
All right, uh, Tyler, what would you do with a million dollars?
A lot of things. I think there's probably well over that in projects talked about on the wish list. Um, you know, everybody's well aware of the Heart of the Good Life Project by now, so that would be a good place. Um, some roads and streets that we have that are falling apart. Sibley Park, for one, I know I worked on that years ago and it's, it's made progress, but we should make Sibley Park great again, I will say that. And some youth investments, things for our, uh, youth in our town. I, I feel like there's not a whole lot for the kids to do. And I'm talking to kids that are old enough to be out doing their own thing. Uh, skateboarding on sidewalks, it's fun when you're with your buddies, but it's not really where we want them to be. So finding a good place to put money for youth would be a, a good thing to do with that.
All right, thanks, Tyler. If you had a million dollars, James, how would you, uh, deploy that? You get ninety seconds.
That is very hypothetical. I don't know, uh, if you think about it city-wise, a million dollars really isn't that much money. When you look at a fire truck, it's five hundred thousand dollars for a brand new fire truck. Squad car, a hundred thousand dollars. Snowplows, three hundred thousand dollars. So money really doesn't go very, won't, wouldn't take long to go. You would, it'd be spent. But I think it would be investing in that Heart of the Good Life Project, again, that sports complex with lights, bleachers, nice concession stand, bathrooms. But if somebody wants to give us that million bucks, send it our way, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Baca, you have a minute and a half to respond as well.
Um, if I had a million dollars, I would probably, uh, take a look at the budget, see what our debt is and pay it off. If there's anything less, I'd probably invest it in the youth, kind of like Tyler said. But again, like, I don't know what we're spending in interest every month, but it's a lot of money. And if we had an extra, I don't know, ten, twenty, thirty, I have no idea what our debt is, interest per month. But right there would be huge savings, so, um, yeah, I would pay off debt.
All right, thank you. Pete?
If, if we were given a million bucks, I think I would go right into the Heart of Good Life and put all the infrastructure in. And I don't know that a million bucks would get it done. I mean, you guys have probably seen the numbers between, yeah, my wife and my neighbor now is also on it. And, you know, you're talking roads, sewer. Anyway, take it way beyond shovel ready. Now you get businesses in there. Now you're, you've really, really expanded your tax, your tax base. That's, that's where I'd put the money.
All right, thank you, Pete. Kent, uh, if you had a million dollars, how would you put it to good use?
Was this question wrote on the back of a check that had a million? But that's my question.
I'll double check, but I don't believe so.
Okay. A million bucks as a homeowner seems like a ginormous amount of money. When you put it into a city, it does. When you put it into a city, it doesn't go very far. Like with Mimi, I would start with the fire and the police, seeing what they need. Anything short of a tank, but just seeing what they need as far as keeping the city safe. Everything else would just go to pay off debt. There's not, a million bucks would probably go about a block on a new high, on a new street. It's not going to do anything, so you might as well financially secure your city a little bit more by paying off.
All right, thank you Kent. The million dollar question to you Scott, and I think you're the last one to respond to it.
I had the longest time to dream about it. I'll leave those dreams aside, but a couple of things came to mind. One was look at long range effect of using that money. Where, I've heard a lot of good ideas, is we need equipment, we need building, and you are right Pete, it's a very expensive to build infrastructure. Doesn't go very far. So one of the things I was thinking about here is, is something like a revolving business fund that, that some cities have to invite other businesses or, or new businesses into town. It's a, it's a source to draw from, since there's no strings attached to it, maybe something like that. And something I've been, with my advertising marketing background, saying what we need in this town is a promotion and hire a professional agency to promote Pequot, to businesses. And we've seen the video, that's a professionally done video, but expand on that. And, you know, you're, you're talking a few bucks. It's like 100,000 bucks to do something like that. So that long-term look, and when you spend that money, what kind of return do you get? Maybe tenfold if you, if you attract a business. And so that's kind of where I would lean towards.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to have two more, I think we have time for two more audience questions, and then we'll head into your closing remarks. And this next question has to do with housing. So the comment is, we don't have enough mid-level housing. And I'm just going to summarize this by asking, how would you address that situation? So Tyler, I believe we're to you. We don't have enough mid-level housing. What might you do to address that situation if you agree that that's the case?
Oh, I definitely agree. I actually have a guy at work that's trying to buy a house right now, and it's almost impossible to find something that's in that range that lasts more than a day. I think we have some good opportunity and good spaces in our town. There's one that's been, a, a development that started years ago, and then takes off and stops several times. Finding a way to work with a developer, maybe, to build, to finish building that development into affordable housing would be, would be a darn good start. Get 10 or 20 more homes going would be a, a huge help to bring more people in and keep people here.
All right, thank you. And then we'll move over to James, and again, the question asked to do with mid-level housing. How might you address that situation if you agree that there's a shortage of it?
Well, we know there's a shortage of houses in Pequot. Right now, I don't think you can find a house in Pequot under $200,000 anywhere in town. We do have a lot of property out there that's for sale along Patriot Avenue. Get a developer in here, Tom, Tom Allen Homes, or he's building them everywhere. And they start from 149,000 up to 249,000, or higher. We need somebody like that to get in here that wants to build and help, and just help us.
All right, thank you. And Jason Baca, the housing question to you regarding mid-level housing and how you might address that.
Well, I think it starts with lowering our taxes, so we, I mean, the, the tax rate is going up way faster than our population growth. So basically, I have land in Wilson Township, and that's, I've built some houses, but I'm not building in Pequot because taxes are too high. There's too many rules, too many ordinances, and too many regulations. My focus is actually reduce the rules, reduce the regulations, reduce the taxes, to actually make Pequot attractive to development. If we don't do that, I'm just being honest, I'm not going to build houses here if I have to go with a whole plethora of rules, and I can go a mile away and build what I want. I mean, that's just the way I look at it. Like, you, I mean, some people want to go into urban areas like Breezy Point, and that's great. But, I mean, most people want a couple acres, and they want to have a couple chickens and a horse. And, you know, all of a sudden, you do stuff, and then you got neighbors trying to get new ordinances because they have a chicken. You know, there's a lot of stuff going in the city that drives people crazy that wants them to go into the township, but they don't have to deal with that. So if we want to continue to, like, there's a specific person that would move there under the current circumstances. Not somebody that grew up here that likes the rural character, because, you know, like, my brother had, you know, somebody says, you, I don't like my neighbor to have a horse. Like, this is what you have to deal with. So until we reduce those rules and regulations and lower our taxes, it's going to be very difficult. That's just the blunt truth of it.
All right, thank you Jason. And I believe now we're to Mr. Pete Clement. Your thoughts on mid-level housing and your plan to address that?
Yeah, I, I agree with everybody in front of me. I mean, there is definitely a lack. I don't think there's any shortage of property to do it. I'm, I, I guess I can say that I'm not well-versed at the legalities. But like, when we came into town and purchased our business, we, we, we got a tax, or a TIF, excuse me, tax increment financing. Perhaps we, you know, investigate things like that to entice builders in. You know, there's got to be a way to reduce, reduce taxes and, and fees upfront in order to get these developments established.
All right, thank you Pete. Kent, to you on, on housing, please.
Kind of like I've been state, the, there's the housing development to the north of town, and it's just sitting there. And I don't know offhand if, what the rules and regulations are in that particular community as far as why no one's wanting to build there. Does no one want to live in a community where there is no trees? Are they looking for that certain up north appeal? I don't know what it is that is keeping people from building in that particular community.
All right, thank you. Kent, Scott, to you, your thoughts on housing, mid-level housing?
Yeah, some, it's a topic we've been looking at for quite some time, actually. And there are plenty of lots for sale in town and in our, in our city borders. A lot of them, very affordable. And for instance, if you were to build a thousand square foot house in Breezy Point, it's going to cost you $2,500 or so for a building permit. In Pequot, the same house would cost you $750 for the permit. We don't have the excessive permitting fees that even Breezy has, but why do people build in Breezy? That's a good question. But one of the, one of the ideas that, that comes about is I've talked to contractors about building homes, a low income or not a low income, but a middle income home of about 200,000 dollars will cost you, you might be able to get 800 to 1,000 square foot. That's it. You want a 1,500 to 2,000 square foot home, they can't build them for that. Price of lumber has gone crazy. Contractors do not care to build 150,000, 200,000 dollar homes. They can't afford it. And so, yeah, the city would have to come up with some spot, special, like a TIF program like Pete was talking about to help out.
All right, thank you Scott. And Mimi, you have the last response, I believe, on that question, which is how you might address the housing situation, especially around mid-level housing.
Okay, I can't speak to the numbers of square feet and how much it costs per square feet. I just don't know what that, those answers are, but I know that we have open land in the city north of the trailer park. There's some new homes down there. It's by far not full yet. There's also Field of Dreams up on 17 that's got a lot of open property available. And then the Evergreen property down a little bit south of town. I believe that's in Pequot Lakes. But, you know, when we get this Heart of the Good Life thing going, and we get some people looking, you know, new jobs, bring new people, new people need homes. Homes equal tax, and, you know, more taxes for our city, so I, I don't know the answer, but I know there's property available. And jobs bring people, so that's what we need to look forward to.
All right, thanks Mimi. And we've reached a point where I have just one audience question left as far as what we have time for, one last audience question, and then we'll move into the closing remarks. And the last question that we received generally is this. What are your thoughts regarding the proposed splash pad at Trailside Park? Your thoughts regarding a proposed splash pad at Trailside Park? And I believe, would it be Tyler? James? It's funny how quickly they correct me on those. Sorry. James Taylor, your thoughts? Minute and a half.
Well, everybody knows that I'm not for a splash pad in town. It's, I don't care if the money's donated to us. It's going to cost the taxpayers money in the long run. You got to pay for the water. Is the water treatment plant, can it hold that many gallons of water a day? I've just, I've never been for it, and I never will be for it. You cannot convince me to be for it. So, thanks.
All right, thank you James. Jason, your thoughts on a splash pad at Trailside Park?
I think this, oh, sorry. I think the splash pad is a great idea. A perfect example of how governments have gone crazy. I mean, to continue to build stuff and spend money without population growth, to me is asinine. Like, I just don't get where people come up with all these ways to spend money, and the population isn't growing. Like, you need the people to justify it. Like, I don't think the taxpayers want to borrow tons of money, even if it's free to maintain it, and then hope that they come. That's, that's not what I would think of as prudent government. Thank you.
All right, thank you Jason. Pete Clement, your thoughts on a proposed splash pad?
I'm right offhand, I oppose it. I guess I haven't, I haven't attended meetings, or, anyway, I haven't seen any hard numbers. And, and in fact, I guess I'll say, it, it almost appears as though, you know, nobody really wants to come up with them. I, I would have to see hard numbers with regard to what the maintenance costs were. Yeah, I, and, and like I said, I haven't seen them as of now. And boy, I, I, it sure seems like blue sky to me as far as a benefit. If somebody could put a number on a benefit of that, I mean, we've got, that's a wonderful playground over there that the Addams donated. I mean, you know, I, I just, I don't know that, I mean, obviously, we'd be targeting younger families. I mean, I guess I'm always thinking tourists. I, I, I just, I kind of got a feel for who's, who it's probably going to service. And not that all kids don't deserve it, I just don't see an economic benefit to the city. And I mean, I know there's more to life than just that. Kids got to have fun, but not, not at the expense way outweighs the, the benefit.
All right, thank you Pete. Kent, your thoughts on a proposed splash pad?
Being on the Parks Commission, I've had quite a bit of time looking into it. And I'm, I've been for it, and I'm, to get it to the point of, I want to, yes, it's donated, but I want to see what it does to our city as far as what we have to pay for it, and can our, our water system handle it? I'm all for it if we can handle it. If it starts to become a burden, if it, the numbers come in wrong and it's a burden, I don't see the benefit of it.
All right, thank you Kent. Scott, that same question to you regarding the splash pad?
Yeah, I'm for to, I'm for continuing to look into it. The playground in the park, people seem to like, that was donated. It's cared for by the city. The buildings, the structures in the park donated, cared for by the city. The grass is in the park that's cared for by the city, and thousands of dollars are spent on that. So anything that's an amenity to our, to our park system, the city cares for it. That means tax dollars are paying for that. The splash pad itself is donated. The upkeep or the continued on operation of it would be a city expense. How much of an expense, we don't know at this point. We don't even know what it would cost to install. The numbers are all over the board. I do know that towns like Deerwood, big town of Deerwood, put one in. Brandon's looking at, put one in. It's a fast, before COVID, it was a fast-growing amenity to a lot of cities. And city planners, expert city planners, will tell you what a city needs for growth, pure bones growth. Good streets, parks, come in the same, in the same breath, and then spaces to grow. And a good school. We've got a bunch of that. So is this a done deal? Not for me, it isn't. I would like to continue pursuing to see what it's going to cost in the long run.
All right, thank you Scott. Mimi, we're to you regarding the proposed splash pad, and you have a minute and a half.
I know that we've been so-called kicking this around for a couple of years, and the council finally asked the park department to take over the duty of investigating the splash pad. Personally, I think it's a great idea, a great addition to our town for young and old families and kids, and you name it, to come to town, come together in an open environment. I mean, families seem to be staying home now. They're not traveling miles and miles to, for recreation. The splash pad could appeal to all kinds of people, young and old, those with physical disabilities. Track, just a great attraction. And we do have money from a generous donation. I don't know how much. I mean, we've looked at very, couple of different options for constructing the splash pad. And I'd like to see it installed next summer. It's going to bring people to our town. We need, we need people to, like I said before, shop local. We lose our businesses, we lose one or two businesses. How many tax dollars does that take away from our coffers? And then the burden is on me and you. So I think we need to attract people quick.
All right, thank you. And we'll move back over for the final response to the question regarding a proposed splash pad in Trailside Park, and we'll pose that to Tyler Gardner. Go ahead Tyler.
So the splash pad, I know, I heard it was, it's been up, brought up for a couple of years. It's actually been at least six years. When I was on the council previously, I think it was 2014 it was brought up, and there was a lot of homework done, there was a committee assembled, there was fundraising efforts. We had the numbers on the maintenance costs at that time. Since then, I have not heard them mentioned in all of these arguments. And quite frankly, it drives me crazy. Just rip the Band-Aid off, let's do it, or let's not do it. Let's create a, a focus group, if you will, of new people, unbiased opinions. Do all their homework, get the numbers, put it out to the public, and put this one to a vote, because there's, this is another highway bypass. And my personal opinion is it's a terrible place to put it in Trailside Park. Heart of the Good Life would be a much better place if we're going to have one.
All right, well, thank you Tyler, and we've reached the end of the time here for both our scripted and unscripted questions. So we're going to move into the closing remarks, and we're giving each candidate one minute to, to, to cover whatever they'd like here at the end. And I believe now we're to Jason Baca. So Jason will allow you your one minute of closing thoughts.
Well, I think my platform is fairly simple, so I won't go any further about that. But the Splash Park isn't a terrible idea, but I think Sibley Park on the lake there is an extremely underutilized part of our town. And I would seriously looking at asking the donor if we could recreate and landscape that place. I used to go there as a kid the day the ice went out. We were in the newspaper, man, the day the ice went out, we were the first ones jumping in that spot. I don't know if people really, really use that area, but if it was me, I would think that would be a good infrastructure project, is to make that park a place where you see a bunch of people. that park a place where you see a bunch of people swimming and the water's clean. And you don't have all the contaminated, you know, chlorine type of stuff that a splash pad encourages. So I would highly encourage the donor or the staff of the park to look and see if we can use that at the Sibley Park and make that area beautiful again. I appreciate your vote very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. One minute closing remark time to Pete. Go ahead, Pete.
Well, I guess I've stated it. I think my strengths are, I'm a longtime member of this community. We've got roots with regard to, we've got a home and a business in the city limits. I was five years an employee of the city. So I, I saw all aspects of the city. I mean, I know how it runs. I was, last winter, I was chosen as an interim city council member. So I did, and I was chose by the sitting, sitting board, or sitting council. So anyway, I had three months' experience with that, which is kind of what led me to want to get involved here this time around. Anyway, I'm, I'm fiscally conservative. I'm conservative all the way across, actually. And I've always kind of got an eye to the, to the little guy out there. So that's, that's kind of who I'm trying to appeal to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Pete. We'll move along to Kent Johnson.
I moved my family here in 2017. I'm, I know I'm new to the city, but I'm, I'm here for the long run. I want, well, everyone up here wants what they believe is best for the city. I want to be a part of the growth of the city, and I want to see this to be a shining star up here. I want this to be a great city where everyone is proud to say, I'm from Pequot. They don't have to say, I'm from just north of Brainerd. They go out and they say, I'm from Pequot Lakes.
All right. Thank you, Kent. We'll move along to Scott Peterson. Scott, you'll have one minute.
Okay. I'll just wrap it up, my comments anyhow, by, once again, thanking for the chamber to putting this on. And experienced, balanced, honest, common-sense decision-making. That's what I'm all about. And that's what I believe makes me the best candidate. I've consistently opposed increasing the tax rate of our city in the eight years I've been on the council. Your property taxes is what the tax rate's all about. And I'll continue to do so if reelected. So here's the thing, you know what you'll get if you vote me to stay on the council. You already know what you're going to get. Proven leadership, integrity, and honest, common-sense decisions. I'm a 25-year resident of this community with kids and grandkids living here, and I plan to be here for a long time, God willing, and the creek don't rise. So please vote for me, and together we can make Pequot Lakes the best place it can be. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Scott. And we'll move over to Mimi. Mimi will have one minute for a closing set of comments. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I decided to run for a council position in 2016. And at that time, I won the position and have been on the council for four years now. I'm running again for this council position because I want to be one of five decision-makers who work to develop a future for our town. My vision is your vision. I'll make sound decisions that I believe align with the values of all of our citizens. I have four years, as I said, of experience in city government, which now gives me a head start on understanding what happens at the council table. I feel that I'm thoughtful, transparent, and honest. I'll be a responsible, reasonable councilman that makes decisions for today and also for the future and the future of our children. So I look for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mimi. And Tyler Gardner, you'll have a minute.
Well, first off, thanks for making me go first when we opened this up. That was awesome. One thing I didn't talk a whole lot about that I wanted to was zoning regulations. One of my big focuses is going to be, and we've talked about it enough here tonight, bringing business in, keeping business here, and helping the current business grow and thrive. Little quick story. My wife and I own Pequot Lake Sanitation, and we were looking to move into Pequot. This is, this is where my heart is. They laid out every roadblock possible. When I was, I had a deal on some property I wanted to build on, and it, it wasn't made, I don't want to say the welcome mat wasn't rolled out, but it was 100% opposite. We ended up building in Jenkins. It's cheaper. The city staff was welcoming. The process was painless. And I want Pequot to be that. I want people to come here and have that experience and, and want to build and grow in our city.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. And I believe our last closing commentary is from James Taylor.
Thank you. I want to thank the chamber for putting this on for us to resort as well. I've been your mayor for two years. It's a learning curve. You don't know, you got to learn a lot, quick. I think I've done pretty well. I'm a quick learner. I would love to do it for two more years. I want you to shop local, support your local business as all you can. We know what times we're in right now. So I will appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, James. And could you join me one last time to thank our candidates for being here today? And I'd like to thank our volunteers that helped make this happen. So on behalf of our partners, all the area chambers, the Brainerd Dispatch, legal women voters, thanks for participating both in person and through Facebook. We appreciate it. Remember to vote. Early voting started September 18th, and Election Day, as you heard, is November 3rd. So thanks a lot. Have a great evening. Stay safe, everybody. Thanks.